Welcome to the March 26, 2024 City Council Meeting. We'll start with a prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our state to be strong and unified, may we continue the legacy of our founders, may we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city to get a better place to live and work. Amen. Sue the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Clark, please call the roll. Counsel Gitcher. Counsel Janess. Counsel Leahy. Counsel Mercia.
Here.
Counsel Noom.
Here.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Scott.
Here.
Counsel Yem.
Here.
Counsel Chow.
Here.
Counsel Dakota.
Here.
Eleven, ten present. Mayor's business, 2.1 communications.
Excuse me.
Counsel Mercia.
That's all right. We know you're fast, but that is a little fast. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and duck in chamber for Dr. Joseph M. Downs, Jr., a lifelong Lowell resident, son of former Lowell mayor and the late Joseph M. Downs, Sr., and his mother, the late Frances Downs. Joe was a 1956 graduate of Lowell High School. In his early years, Joe was a prolific amateur boxer, capturing championships and outstanding boxer awards in the Silver Mittens, 1953 and 54, and Golden Gloves 1958 tournaments. He also was the United States Second Army welterweight champ, 1956, and participated in the Olympic trials. Joe attended Lowell Tech and Palmer College of Chiropractic and received his Doctor of Chiropractic degree in 1962. He also received a Master's Degree in Clinical Psychology from the New York Institute of Technology. Joe began his chiropractic practice in 1962 in Pelham, New Hampshire. In 1977, he established Downs Chiropractic Offices and relocated to Drumhill area of Lowell, where he treated thousands of patients, I being one of them, until his semi-retirement in 2014. He continued to practice on a reduced schedule until his official retirement in 2017. Joe was a well-known member of the Lowell community, whose friendship and energy touched the lives of many near and far. He was actively involved in numerous community and professional organizations throughout his life, including past chairman of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Board of Registration of Chiropractors, past president of the Merrimack Valley Chiropractic Society, diplomat of the American Academy of Pain Management, past president of the Friends of the Lowell Council on Aging, past president and historian Ancient Otter of Hibernians, Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Lowell, member of the East End Club, lifetime member Lowell Lodge of Outz. He also remained involved in amateur boxing for over 50 years as a referee, judge, and more recently as deputy, Chief Deputy Commissioner of the Mass Athletic Commission Boxing Division. Joe is survived by his five children, Brian and his wife Nancy Downs, Marcia Downs-Bird, Timothy Downs and his partner Linda Beth Abraham, John and his wife Susan Downs, and Joseph Downs III and his wife Sina, 11 grandchildren, and his former spouse Karen. Joe is predeceased by his brother Michael P. Downs and Joe's wife Imelda O'Connor Downs. He will be truly missed, and I would also like to offer a moment of silence and duck in chamber for all those who passed away since our last city council meeting. They also will be truly missed. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Corp, do the likes.
I think.
Mayor, I have one more.
Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and duck in the chamber for this young, I call him nephew, Samuel Cesar Monta Chung, 44, resident of Bedford, Massachusetts, passed away peacefully on Thursday, March 21st, 2024. He was a devoted husband of C.D. Sha Chung, with whom he celebrated 12 loving years of marriage. They were blessed with a son, Ravi Chung, whom Samuel adored deeply. Samuel was born in a Khawadang refugee camp in Thailand on December 24, 1979, to Richard and Po Chung of Lowell, Mass. Born amidst the turmoil of the Civil War in his homeland, Samuel arrived in the U.S. at the age of one month old and was raised in Lowell, Massachusetts. Samuel attended Lowell Public Schools, graduated from Lowell High School in 1997. Upon graduation, Samuel enlisted in the U.S. Army and served with distinction, participating in multiple international missions, including U.N. peacekeeping effort in Kosovo and two tours of duty in Iraq. During his second tour, Samuel was wounded in action and honored with the Purple Heart solemn distinction. After his honorable discharge from the military, he earned his bachelor degree at Eastern University. Throughout his life, Samuel dedicated himself to serve his country and making the world a peaceful and safe place for everyone, first through military service and later by safeguarding Americans as a federal air marshal. In addition to his devoted wife, son, and parents, Sam lived a large and loving family: Sharifa, Zakaria, Kevin, Simon, Natalia, Sophie, Tufik, Ralph Zali, Razad, Sharifa, Mackenzie, Rasin, Isabella, Mason, Lucas, Milan, Alicia, Sperranzo, Tida, Linda, Nalin, Vasha, Prachi, Tarang, Alora, and Zela. The visiting hour will be held Wednesday, March 27, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. in Blake Chelmsford Funeral Home located at 24 Warden Street. 28 at 10:00 a.m., intermittent follow to follow in the Lowell Cemetery, a celebration of life reception to follow immediately afterwards. Memorial donation may be made in Samuel's name to the Wounded Warrior Project. You will be sorely missed by all of us. May your soul rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any others? To Mayor's business, 2.1 communications, Zoom participation, motion accepted, placed on file by Counsel Leahy, seconded by Counsel Mercia, all in favor, say aye. Motion passes. 2.2 recognitions. We have a couple of groups and individuals that have been honored recently, and I'd like to take a moment here at the City Hall chambers to recognize their hard work as well. 2.2 recognitions of the 8th Annual Sustainable Lowell Awards. This year, two groups, the Lowell Litter Crew and UMass Lowell's Rist Institute for Sustainability and Energy. Please come to the podium. If anybody from the two groups would want to come up to just be recognized, that'd be great.
Good evening, manager, city councilors, and all. My name is Jay Mason. I'm here as the former Chair of the Lowell Sustainability Council, and I would like to present the recognition to these seven recipients. We'll take six or seven minutes and identify each with their appropriate award, if we could. First, we have the award. In general, the Sustainability Council gives out two awards for green design or community leadership. The awards distinguish these persons or organizations actively engaged in advancing the vision for a more sustainable, resilient Lowell, as described in the Sustainable Lowell 2025 Master Plan. This past year, the award goes to UML's Rist Institute. The Rist Institute for Sustainability and Energy is the university's center for hands-on research on sustainability, climate change, and renewable energy. The goal is to create blueprints for human-scale sustainability in communities throughout our region and across the world. Thank you to the Rist Institute. Our second Sustainability Council Award went to the Lowell Litter Crew. I believe Brad is here and his group. The Lowell Litter Crew, over the past three years since inception, the crew has hosted 200 volunteer events in the city, resulting in 10,000 volunteer hours donated to the beautification of Lowell by 1,250 unique individuals, volunteers. Their Adopt a Street program provides a bucket and picker to any resident willing to perform a weekly sweep of their street, near their home or business, and Operation Rosebud with the mayor's office and the senior center, which provides snow shoveling assistance to elderly and disabled. Their dream of a clean Lowell has inspired a wave of new volunteers to join their efforts and show their pride in our beautiful city. Thank you very much to the Lowell. The Youth and Climate Change Action Program has four, this is the final awards, the four final recipients, and these are Lowell High School students, so they are to be especially commended for stepping up and addressing the challenge of climate change in an era that is not so easy to do this kind of work. Tonight, I want to celebrate the award for carbon footprint work, which went to Panina We also had a plan for composting by Tyvorn Mateus Mubugwawa, I believe is the right pronunciation. Is Tyvorn here? I'm sorry. And we have an award for urban forestry, which went to Desha Patel. And finally, an award for plastic waste, which went to Gisella Sanquish. These students did a phenomenal job. I'm so honored to be able to host this award ceremony for them, give them the recognition they deserve, and encourage them to do more going forward. Thank you very much for your time.
If I may. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, city councilors, and the Sustainability Council, thank you very much for inviting us here today. I would like to recognize not only the members of our trash family, who are standing here with me, but more than 1% of the city of Lowell who has volunteered with us in our three-year history. As we enter our fourth season of Litter Crew, I reflect on a promise that we made from day one. Tomorrow, there'll be more of us. I am proud beyond words that our volunteer force is growing in number, in ability, and most importantly, in community involvement. The mission of Litter Crew is to create and support volunteer opportunities, not just to pick up trash, but as you know, 275,000 pounds of trash has kept us quite busy. Last Saturday, in the freezing rain, DPW provided a dumpster and loader for our season kickoff to 17 volunteers who came out despite the weather, and their involvement greatly amplified our effect in the field. We are so grateful for DPW's partnership, and we would not be able to perform our work each and every Saturday without them. We look forward to exploring ways that this partnership can accelerate our work, especially in active and abandoned encampments, and allow for some Saturdays to be spent in public space improvement beyond trash cleanup. Under any policy which results in our unhoused neighbors being driven deeper into the woods, Litter Crew's assistance with trash removal will only become more difficult. Thank you for your time. I would also like to voice Litter Crew's full support of Counsel Robinson's motion 6.3 and relay our intended schedule to work with the DOT on a series of events both in April on the Connector and in June on the VFW.
Once again, thank you for your hard work, and congratulations. Thank you. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, sorry, first we do the motion to accept the placement on file by Counsel Mercia, seconded by Counsel Noom, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, minutes of rules in Election Law Subcommittee, March 19th. City Council Regular Meeting, March 19th, Ad Hoc Subcommittee Restoration of Superior Courthouse, on March 20th, for acceptance. Motion accepted, placed on file by Counsel Robinson, seconded by Counsel Scott. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Not quite 7 o'clock yet, so move on to Section 6. City Council motions, 6.1, Counsel Gitcher, request city manager to update the city council on the ARPA payments for retired city workers that worked during the pandemic and eligible for ARPA funds. Seconded by Counsel Janess, Counsel Gitcher.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you to Manager Golden. I know we discussed this multiple times, and I'm just wondering where we are in the process. As you well know, that some of these workers worked alongside of the people that we gave the money to. They worked the whole thing, and some retired during the month that it was giving out, after the pandemic, and didn't receive it. So I just wonder where or if we are in the process of making payments to them as we did every other employee that worked during the pandemic.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council, yes, Counsel, during our last discussion last week, this has been something that we will be looking at, if the council so wishes to do so. We have just finished up, as many of you know, with the ability, we've, ARPA money has been spent already on the employees that are here, and then also, per last week, we just finished up with our final dollar figure for all of the current employees. So now that that has been, that has bypassed us, we will be looking at the retirements, the people who worked during that timeframe, if that is the council's wishes. And then we'll come back to you with probably a transfer of sorts from ARPA to that particular piece, once again, at the council's wish.
In fairness to the employees that retired, I take a person like Mike O'Malley, who worked right through it, worked alongside, he retired May after the pandemic was done, many, many months after. He retired just before they calculated, so he was excluded from it. And there are many of the public safety people who also worked alongside of people, and they deserve the same pay. So I just hope that the body here would support this and would push for this to be done also, in addition to everybody. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 6.2, Counsel Yem, request city manager to have the appropriate department post a no motorized vehicles, dirt bikes, e-bicycles allowed in all city parks and place, I guess, billboards or bollards at wide entrance to the park, to the park. Seconded by Counsel Scott, Counsel Yem.
This is the Register Speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clerk.
Kendrick Delorb.
Good afternoon. Oh, it's this one. Good afternoon. I'm Kendrick Delorb, and I live on Mount Washington Street in the Acre. Before anything, I just want to stop by thanking you so much, Counsel Yem, for being just so responsive and listening to your neighbors' concerns. So I just want to thank you. We really appreciate you in the Acre. Mr. Mayor, Manager Golden, Manager Machado, and members of this council, thank you for all letting me speak tonight. On March 16th, my five-year-old sister and I walked to the North Common Park to play and to enjoy the beautiful weather. Not only were we there, but the weather that day also prompted many children and families to be at the park. Out of nowhere, a gang of motorbikes rushed through the park, forcing young kids and families to jump out of their way and onto the grass. Life-threatening events like this should not be happening in Lowell. Councilors, you know, in this chamber, we can talk about budgets, finance, and parking revenue, but we need to complement these with talks about real issues here in our city. You know, and I just want to end by saying I'm not here on my behalf. I'm just here to defend and call attention to the safety of our young children and our families. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and may God bless the good people of Lowell.
Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kendrick, for brought it up, and the issue is at the North Common, as Kendrick was saying, but in my motion, I want to apply to all parks throughout the city, and I would urge that the city and the police department do enforce, as the weather get better, these dirt bike gangs of them will be flock the road of our city, and worst of all, in the park, as Kendrick was mentioning, while families and children enjoying the park. So this cannot be tolerated, and we have seen on the roadway of these gangs of dirt bike, you know, take over the street and force a lot of drivers, senior drivers, to kind of stop their car to let them go through. We saw also on the news that these gangs of dirt bike taking over some of the highways and stuff like that, so we do not want this to be, get out of hand. So I urge that the managers and his team and the local police department to start cracking down on this unlawful driving. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate Counsel Yem bringing this forward, and Kendrick for coming down and sharing his experience with us. Whatever we can do to make our parks safer and more welcoming, I'm going to be in support of. But I do have some concerns, simply if you're putting up bollards and trying to restrict access, I worry about the mom with a stroller or the, you know, resident in a wheelchair being able to access the park as well. We need to make sure that whatever we do, we keep it safe and accessible for those folks as well, because they deserve the quiet enjoyment of the park just as much as anyone else. That said, you know, we have had dirt bike issues all around the city for several years now, and I know that LPD has been, has been doing their best to fight this battle, and it's unfortunate that it continues. And I know that LPD is doing everything they can, but there's no magic button that we can push to fix this problem. But whatever we can do to increase the safety in the parks, I am going to be in support of, and I just want to make sure we keep them accessible for everyone as we do that. Thank you.
Counsel Gitcher.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I agree with the speaker. We've talked about this at length, about them driving on sidewalks in the street and just terrorizing everybody, you know, whether it's an elderly person or even somebody our age on the sidewalks, when they drive by, I'm probably the elderly person, as Mr. Golden looks at me weird. You're just watching these, they're taking over the city with these things, and I don't know how you would put up a bollard to keep them out, because you'd have to put the chain across or something, which would restrict others from going in, because the bikes are so narrow, they're narrower than most people's shoulders, so they can get through. So I welcome the motion if it works, but I just don't know without enforcement by our law enforcement and trying to figure out where these things are coming from, out of what garages they're housed in, that we're ever going to solve this problem. We need to understand, and neighbors know where they're coming from. They don't just magically appear in the middle of Merrimack Street. They have to be started somewhere, they run out of a garage, all we have to do is get someone to tell us, and then just wait, and we'll know where they're coming from. But obviously, the people next door to these people aren't that disturbed by it, or they would be calling the police and saying, here's where this motor vehicle is being housed. So I thank you for the motion. It just brings to light more and more issues with these things as summer is starting to come around.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 6.3, Counsel Robinson, request city manager to reach out to Lowell Litter Crew, appropriate state departments, area nonprofits, our local educational institutions, neighborhood groups, and any and all other stakeholders to organize a citywide cleanup event, seconded by Counsel Noom, Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. As you just heard from Lowell Litter Crew, when they were accepting their award, their motto was Ben, tomorrow there'll be more of us. I mean, they've stepped up time and time again to help the city in its efforts, whether it's getting, working with DPW ahead of the Folk Festival, you name it, I mean sweeps before all other major events in all different areas of the city. One thing that they've always, always, always wanted to complete is getting 1% of our city population out on the same day to clean. Now, whether it's you clean the 10 feet in front of you, your stoop, or you're more adventurous and you want to go and clean the neighborhood, either way, if we can organize a citywide cleanup effort, and I think they've kind of shown that they can spearhead these kind of operations, so I think we have a great opportunity to try to show our residents that even cleaning a little bit, it goes a long way, especially if we can get 1% of the population out there to do it. So I look forward to the response. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. Through you to the manager. These motions are terrific, and they help out the city tremendously, but this also could lead, could follow up with, during the budget session, if there's any room to hire more inspectors, I've been on a few of these cleanups, and a week later, two weeks later, wherever the section is that gets cleaned up is, it's a disgrace again. And some of it's private businesses, some of it's streets, but if we had more enforcement out there to follow up with these clean, with these cleanups, you know, for example, one time we cleaned up a business on Cambridge Street and Chelmsford Street, and a couple of weeks later, you know, there's trash all over the place again. And it's a private business, if we send somebody over there to tell them, you know, two weeks ago, we helped you out, and we cleaned up your land, and now you just let it go to pot again. So if there's any room for more inspectors, when the budget comes up, to enforce what the Litter Crew does and what the citizens are doing to keep our city clean, that would go a long way. Thank you.
Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand Counsel Leahy's frustration. I feel it myself. Instead of, and probably in addition to inspectors, I think we need the cameras. We need to focus on blighted areas where people are just discarding their yard goods, their things that they should pay to be taken away by the, I don't know, BFI or Waste Management or Waste Management, but yet they don't want to pay, so they go up maybe to First Street, and they dump a couch over a place, over the fence, or down on the embankment. And the reason I highlight that area is because I'm receiving calls from people that are concerned about the area that we've cleaned up in the past, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager, along First Street, you know, the embankment that leads to 110 and that area there. Now you can see it, because the leaves are not on the trees, but I'd like to see if we can have a campaign to clean that area as we have in the past. I'll try to get the sheriff's office, as we have in the past, but in that respect, I think we'd need a cruiser down below for the fact that, you know, they'd be in that area cleaning, and they might need a truck down there or whatever, but it's unsightly, and people are concerned about it, because you go down 110 and you see all the stuff, the pillows, the furniture that's brought down there, dumped down there. So if we could just address that and try to get more cameras in that area to see who these culprits are, that's what I'm hoping for. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Counsel Gitcher, I think you used to be on the back of those BFI trucks growing up, right?
I was. Through you to Manager Golden, didn't we just purchase portable cameras? Do we have them?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Yes, councilors, we do have 12 cameras on order. Eight are electric, in the sense that they will need to be hooked up to. Eight are electric, in the sense that they will need to be hooked up to poles at a different locations, let's just put it that way. And four are going to be very obvious, the larger solar versions that you become accustomed to. So we have 12 coming in. I can get back to you on time. I know that they've been ordered, just waiting for them to arrive.
The thing that concerns me about, you know, government is every time there's an issue, we decide to just hire somebody and hire somebody and hire somebody. You know, we're going to see it again tonight. We had a problem here, so we're going to try to hire our way out of it. When you look at these issues, we're trying to resolve it with the cameras and say, okay, here we are, and start working at more efficiency than just hiring somebody and throwing it out there. You know, we got a problem, let's hire somebody. Well, I don't think that's the way government should operate. And since I've been here, I don't know that we've even cut any positions, and we've probably hired over 80. And at some point, there's a saturation rate for the resident, and I think we're at it. But some people may disagree. But when we look at the budgets and we start looking at the other post benefits and stuff like that, you're looking, saying, how are we going to manage this? So I think that the way you're going about it with the cameras is the way to start it. And I do agree with the motion, is we should have a citywide cleanup. We've had this, every community has that. It's a good moment for everybody. So thank you again for this motion.
Counsel Yehm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think in addition to what we just talked about, the public campaign, you know, keep our city clean, the reason I say that, because I cleaned the front yard of my house. It's about 60 feet that park by three or four cars. Then the individual who park in front just take out their fast food bag, you know, McDonald's, and just throw it on the ground with all the drinks and leftover lunch, whatever they have. So they have no respect of trying to keep the city clean or put it in the trash. So I put a trash bag in front of my house. One family parked the car, they put their leftover food, fast food, in the back. But the rest of it who park in front of my house, they just drop it on the roadside. So maybe public campaign, keep our city clean, similar to the manager talked about, don't throw the snow, things like that, yeah. So that will help. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Leahy, then Counsel Robinson. Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. Just one quick question to the manager. With these new cameras, are we going to have the ability to backtrack a few days? That would, you know what I mean, if so, if we discover that there's a dump and how, you know, are we going to be able to go back three, four days to track?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the counsel. Yes, counsel, we're going to have, it's going to be recorded. These particular cameras won't need to have somebody, somebody's eyes on them at all times. So there is a recording feature to, I know, I believe the eight of them, I believe all 12 of them, but I'm confident that the eight electric ones have the recording feature. At times, LPD has used the other larger ones that are very noticeable, that everybody sees, that's actually, they have eyes on that area for a reason, because of things that may be happening. So, but I believe that they can be recorded as well.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I think another component of this is, is, you know, as my colleagues have stated, we organized a citywide cleanup, kind of kick-started, but I also have been contacted by many residents very interested in the potential Adopt a Barrel program or something along those lines, because we shared that post on social media, that Refuge Lowell is actually working on the program that we rolled out or tried to get rolled out with, kind of dressing up the waste receptacles with art. And a lot of people are saying they'd be willing to maybe sponsor or buy a barrel. But the big piece to that is going to be, if we start increasing the amount of receptacles citywide, we're going to have to get serious about, you know, maybe a second truck for the DPW that can pick up the waste. Because, you know, right now is the quiet time of year, as far as people being out and about. But if we put out doubled the amount of barrels in the nice weather, then that's doubled the amount of pickups and trash required. And when those get full to the top, it creates a mess in the neighborhoods, as we're all aware. Thank you.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Back to the general public hearing, Section 4, 4.1, ordinance amend Chapter 243-23, outdoor restaurant and retail areas, second reading. Ordinance amending the code of ordinances City of Lowell, Massachusetts, as amended Chapter 243 entitled Streets and Sidewalks by deleting in its entirety Section 243-23 entitled Sidewalk Seating Outside Restaurants and inserting in its new place Outdoor Restaurant and Retail Areas. As Stoudt will open up the meeting for all those in favor. All in favor? Close our section of the meeting. This one, all is opposed. All is opposed. Our section of the meeting is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Scott, seconded by Counsel Yehm. Mr. Mayor? Counsel Dakota?
Thank you. Through you to Ms. Baez. I just want to make sure that all my colleagues are on the same page with this. So this, in fact, is bringing us back to the pre-pandemic policy. Is that correct?
Bazros?
It's a slight adjustment to the pre-pandemic policy. In that pre-pandemic, we had only sidewalk seating and streeteries didn't exist. And so this is formalizing the creation of a permanent streetery program and adding it to creating a single process, application process, whereas prior to, people were applying for these things separately, now it would be a single process. And then in addition to that, we are also including the ability for retail establishments to have retail opportunities on the sidewalk as well, which is also something that had not been included previously.
During the pandemic's period, though, we were not charging the restaurants or bars for the streetery. Is that correct?
That is correct. During the pandemic, we did not charge at all for the cost of the installation of the streeteries, nor has the city ever charged for the barriers themselves. Those were all purchased by the City of Lowell. And then in addition to that, pre-COVID, we also did not have a fee for sidewalk seating.
So tell me what our plan is then?
So the plan moving forward, the recommendation that we're going to make to the council moving forward is that we actually do create a small fee of $50 for annual sidewalk seating permit per restaurant. So it would be a fee that they would have to apply for every year to be allowed to put sidewalk seating out. It's a minimal cost, but would cover, you know, staff time to review and approve. And then in addition to that, for any business that was interested in having a streetery, which is the sort of sidewalk seating, but in the parking space in front of their business, it would be a fee of $250 is what we're recommending to help cover the cost of actually putting out the barriers and those things.
Having done a little research today and yesterday, I'm also under the impression that the ABCC wants a little piece of the pie as well. Is that correct?
So the ABCC does have a fee structure that they manage and control, which is related to allowing restaurants to serve alcohol outside. So any business that is applying for this but would like to serve alcohol, which is all of the ones essentially that we've had in the past, would also be required to pay a fee directly to the ABCC, correct?
I do understand the city's fee. I understand the manpower and everything, getting the barriers. But I don't know if I, maybe through you, Mr. Mayor, through to the city solicitor, I'm not getting this ABCC getting an extra $200 when the city, this is a local ordinance, in my opinion. Why is the ABCC trying to get another $200 from our, from our restaurants? Now we're looking at $450 for them just to open up the streeteries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, ABCC, that's all run through the state. They control their fees and their fee structure. But I do know that ABCC does have that $200 fee just to apply, and that's something that they do. They set that fee, and that applies to everyone across the state.
Is that something we can contest?
I mean, I suppose we could try to put something together and send it into the Attorney General's office, but typically, that's not something that a municipality really has any sort of authority even to challenge. We could certainly try. I'm not sure it would be successful, but we could certainly try.
I'm just, I'm just looking out for the restaurant owners and bar owners that's obviously still trying to make their way through the pandemic, and we're already hitting them with 450 bucks. So I thank you for your time. Thank you, Ms. Baez.
Counsel Yehm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Yvani Bazros. Is this ordinance kind of mirror what the governor has proposed, some of the pandemic that we talked about, allowing businesses, restaurants to have the outdoor sidewalk cafe, and now make it permanent? Is this new ordinance mirror what the governor proposed recently? Thank you.
So the, yes. So essentially, since COVID, during COVID, the state government created a sort of emergency program. And then after, kind of after COVID, I guess, as things started opening back up, the state continued to extend that and allow communities to sort of utilize that same language for another year, for another year. And so last year, the state essentially came out and said, we're going to allow you to do this extension for one more year. And the cutoff for that is April 1st of 2024, so next week. And so that allowed communities essentially the time to create an ordinance that would allow for us to create streeteries on a more permanent basis instead of continuing the one-year extension. So, yes, that it is consistent with that. And then as we started looking into it, the team in Development Services and Economic Development felt like it made more sense to combine the streeteries, the sidewalk seating, and the sidewalk retail under one program, since a lot of the businesses were going to apply for one or more of those, and it would just streamline the process.
Thank you. And I know a number of restaurant owner are very happy to hear that and make it permanent. And it's also generating a lot of businesses for our cities, particularly during the summer month, where all the visitor coming to Lowell have an opportunity to enjoy outdoor dining. This is an excellent. And I know one more, the state even allow that if I go to a restaurant, I did not finish my liquor that I bought, a bottle half left. The state allow me to have the restaurant bag it, so put it away. Do we have that kind of, you know, provision to allow someone like myself have a really expensive red wine leftover and take it home? Thank you.
Great. Just from the chat, with all the information that I've heard, and if someone wants a second grade, if not, I'll make a motion to waive the city's fees just for this calendar year, and then knowing that next year, this will be going into place. Mrs. Sloss, is that something that we can do as a city? First of all, see if I got a second. So motion on the floor, seconded by Counsel Getchey. Mr. Sloss?
Yeah, so that's, that's something we could certainly do as a city, if it's the wish of the body.
Okay. So it doesn't hit twice? We'll do that, right? Motion on the floor. All right, so.
But the ABCC will still infl-
They can make it $2,000 tomorrow. They have to pay.
Yeah, okay.
It's out of our hands.
Thank you.
So we have Counsel Mercy, Counsel Getchey, Counsel Dakota, then Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It just frosts my bonnet when the state has to get involved in, it's like a shakedown. You want this, but we want something, and I'm tired of it. But that's my opinion. But I just need a little bit of clarification with this. I don't understand, we're changing sidewalk seating outside restaurants which to permanent streetery program, but when it says outdoor restaurants and retail area, what does that mean? Because we don't sell clothes on the street, our retail goods, do we? We do?
I believe we can, but I'll go to the Ms. Baez.
So the idea is that we would allow people to do like a pop-up in front of their store if they wanted to sell products outside?
Good. I just didn't know that. Thank you.
Counsel Getchey?
Mr. Mayor, I thank you for the motion. I think that this is a revenue neutral for us, because if people put out sidewalk stuff, yes, you lose a few spots, but more people come downtown and then they go into the parking garages. So you're gaining revenue that way. We're not losing anything, and I think it's neutral. I think that when you start looking at more people coming down that have to park, you're looking at more revenue from the parking garages. So why would we strap the businesses with this? And I think it's a great motion, and I just don't know that, and maybe it doesn't cover the 250. But at the end, it's got to be close. When you're looking at, okay, you're taking up this and you're throwing more seating in there, and more people are coming downtown, in theory, it should be sending more people into the parking garages, and revenue should be on the rise that way. Whether we see those numbers or not, I mean, that's something that we could analyze this year afterwards. But it makes a lot of sense to try to bring more people out and then try to push them into the garages and make back that 250. So I thank you for putting that motion forward.
And talking to a couple of business owners, prominent business owners downtown last weekend, all three of them were thrilled with this proposal by, and they actually were very complimentary of DPD for the reach out that they did and everything. So Counsel Dakota?
I'll say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually just going to speak in support of the way it's written right now. I mean, it is a minimal amount right now to have this type of service that they can have. I don't know if there's any, maybe through the CFO, how much does, how much do we lose right now in revenue for a parking spot? I'm sure they've done that when they've looked at this, or, which is again later on in the agenda about the parking losses that we're having.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yeah. So for one spot on the street, I suppose, excuse me, there's an argument to be made that those, those parkers will go into the garage, and so maybe, excuse me, maybe it's a net-net result. But one spot under the old rates, about $4,200 a year. Under the new rate, or the new proposal, rather, it would be closer to $6,000 or $7,000 a year per spot, the value. If someone was parked there the whole time, was paying for the whole time, I mean, if they got a ticket, that would add to the, add to the revenue we would generate on that spot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I mean, that sounds like a great number, but let's all be realistic. We don't have spots full 24 hours a day, 365 days a year for one, for two. I think above and beyond, I think they did a great job. We discussed this every year that I've been on the council so far, because it was a temporary situation that the state was allowing. I thank you for streamlining the process, for the most part, for our business owners. And is this going to also include, so I know one of the problems that our business owners brought to the table before was, it took a while to process the application, and so sometimes we got stuck in a situation where we got beautiful weather early and permits weren't even able. So will business owners be able to apply for the following year, say, at the end of this year? So if I get, get one of these permits, is there going to be a mechanism that I pay for this year? Can I reapply, say, in December for the following year? So then that way, if we get an early spring, I can hit the ground running, and we'll have a set date that's reasonable, that works with our DPW, due to the weather, obviously. But is there anything that we're going to be gearing up to allow people to take advantage? And I think we saw the same on the back end. I think we saw the same on, when we got stretches of really nice weather towards the end of the season, and it was kind of up in the air situation. And I believe the manager just said, hey, let it, let it go, let them earn the extra bucks. But I think that's something, too, we need to be mindful of, streamlining this process and allowing them to pay this new permit situation ahead of time. So then when the city's able to roll this out in the spring, they hit the ground running and they're already paid.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the counsel, Counsel, subsection 243-23, the first page, under B, we did change that. And that was the council's thought process here. I think Counsel Janas had brought that up last year. We had a little bit of a concern that we had a beautiful weather throughout November. I think, I want to say, Counsel Robinson, you're right. So what we did do is we moved it to April 1st, all the way to November 30th, and then the period of time that may be extended at the discretion of the council, the city manager, excuse me. And mostly, that has to do with an insurance matter, to make sure that said businesses have the appropriate insurance. So that's something that I believe is another proof positive that we're trying to continue the trend of this happening. So that came right here from the council floor. I can remember it like it was yesterday. Everybody wanted to stay out. But we do have to be mindful in that November, December timeframe of snow, and January and whatnot. So, but if this is allowed, that the discretion at the city manager's side would be obviously the discretion of this council, if they want to bring different ideas and different timeframes. So I think that's, that's been answered, and I'm pretty excited about it, simply because of that November time- of that November timeframe that I recall so well, that we were just about to pick up those barriers. And I think we ended up keeping them out there, ensuring that everybody had the proper insurance. But maybe that's something we can take back for the future year coming into 2025. How would DDS handle that? That's something we could have a discussion with DPD and the folks over there.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Ms. Bayazros?
Just to, just to follow up on that. So the other thing that's changing in the ordinance language is that this will allow sidewalk seating year-round. So not streeteries, given the barriers and the need for snow clearing, but, you know, given that temperatures continue to vary pretty wildly, and we've had more and more days of, you know, 60-degree weather in the, in the middle of the winter, the team decided to allow for sidewalk seating annual, like throughout the year. And so the $50 would be for the full year, and applications could, you know, open January 1st.
Excellent. Thank you.
Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to thank the team for all the effort on this. I think this is a good ordinance, and I think it's, it goes a long way towards establishing expectations and allowing the business owners to know what's coming down their, their pike, what they need to expect for fees and, and, you know, what their responsibilities are. I think that's great. I understand the want, the motion the mayor made to waive the fees for this year. I'm fine with waiving them for this year, but I do think that going forward, it makes sense to have these fees in place, because it does cost the city money to move the barriers, to, you know, set everything up and get things in place. And it's not an onerous fee. You know, this is a, this is a revenue generator for the business. It's also a revenue generator for the city. But I think it does make sense to, to have a little something in there to say, hey, you know, we've got seen in the game here, too, and we just need some help to make sure that we do everything right. But I'm fine with waiving the fees for this year. The, the timing that we mentioned in 243-23B, I think it makes sense to give the manager the discretion to be able to extend that in light of that situation we had. The one thing I will say is, this provision does not give the manager the ability to end the streetery season early if that's necessary. That may be something we want to consider. If we were to ever get a blizzard in the middle of November, and we wanted to pick up the, the barriers beforehand so we could clean the snow, that might be a point of friction. There's nothing here that gives you that ability. But I don't think that means we shouldn't pass this now. We can do that as an amendment sometime between now and November if we decide that's something that's relevant. So that's everything I have. Thank you.
Motion to adopt by Council Getche, seconded by Council Dakota. I will take the ordinance first. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Council Getche.
No.
Council Janess.
Sorry, Mr. Clerk. Yes. It's the motion that-
The motion to adopt the ordinance, Council.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercy.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Council Chow. Council Dakota.
Yes.
Tenyes.
Motion on the floor. That was made by Mayor Rock, seconded by Council Getche, to waive the fees for the calendar year, for the season. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Getche.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercy.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rock.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Council Chow. Council Dakota.
Yes.
So you used to be the one no vote councillor, right? A matter of fact, you know, of habit. Don't doubt about it. Right, yeah. Section 5, utility public hearings, 5.1, National Grid request installation of underground conduit from pole 37 to feed new transformer onto property at 735 Broadway Street.
Mr. Mayor, there is a person here from National Grid on Zoom, David Boucher.
We'll start with all those in favor. In favor?
Me.
Say, go ahead.
Yep. Go ahead.
Dave Boucher, Senior Designer, National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, North Andover. Corner of Ting and Broadway Streets, we have pole 37. And what we're asking for from the city is to go from our overhead lines underground at that point on the sidewalk, run down the sidewalk and into the new property where there's 52 new residences will eventually be living there. And that would enable us to provide electricity, 3.5% electricity. It's 80 feet long from where pole 37, the existing pole is, to the transformer on the private property. And the city sees fit. It would enable us to go forward with the project as shown in the diagram we provided. Thank you.
Thank you. That portion of the hearing is closed. All those who speak in opposition, 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 that portion of the hearing is now closed. Open up to the body for any questions or comments.
Move approval.
Move approval by Council Getche, seconded by Council Janess. Move to the wire inspector for a report by Council Getche, seconded by Council Janess. Returning to the motion list, 6.4, Council Robinson requests city manager to provide update on plan to clean embankment on the VFW next to the Aiken Bridge, seconded by Council Scott. Council Robinson?
Thank you. I've received quite a bit of calls from especially residents in the area. I'm sure everyone here has seen it. There's a large stockpile of debris right when you come over the Aiken into Centerville, right to your left. And I think something needs to be done. I'm not sure if that's state property, but we have a rather large encampment that's growing over there, and the amount of debris that's in that area is insane. So anything that can be done to clean this would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All, Council Getche.
Through you to Manager Golden. Is that DCR land?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council, that area is kind of choppy. It's City of Lowell land. There's even a private business that owns a tower in that area. As, so DCR, City of Lowell, Mass DOT, or if you really want to think of the old, the old DCR, which I'm losing it right now, because when there was an issue on the Beaver Street Bridge, there were four owners in that area. So that's, that's one of the challenging areas. It could be Lowell, it basically could be the city, it could be the state, depending exactly on the location. So we'll have to, we'll have to zero in on that.
So who enforces how close you can be to a waterway and just throw trash and debris? Because there are obviously laws on the books, federal laws on the books about waterways and how close you can be to them and what they're doing over there. Who enforces that? Is that the state or is that us?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council, that would probably, once again, depending on who, what Council Robinson is talking about, I would believe that that would be city land. But I don't want to swear to that until I get out there and we take a, take a look. At that point, I would say it would be the City of Lowell LPD. But if it was the old DCR, then that would be probably Mass Environmental Protection, Department of Environmental Protection, the environmental police. And that's something that we have a contact there as well. So once we get to the bottom, we will try to figure that out.
Because once it impedes closer, it is definitely the environmental police's jurisdiction. And that's where it comes down to. When you see this stuff, how much hard work went in cleaning up those banks of that river from the 1970s to today, and then you see, maybe five, six years ago, and then you look at it now, and you're like, are we going back to the 1970s at this point? And that's where the question is. And I would agree that it's just a complete disaster. If you, if you go back to even where the dog park is, it's going back to the same way. And that's where the problem is, is you move from, move one thing from one area, it goes to the next. So I just, I don't know what the solution is. But if we could just, you know, clean it up a little bit. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. opposed motion passes. 6.5, Council Noon requests city manager to provide an update on the Merrimack River Boathouse concept. Mr. Clerk? I'm sorry, seconded by Council Mercy. Mr. Clerk?
Register Speaker, Dennis McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Dennis McCarthy, and I reside at 216 Foster Street here in the City of Lowell. I want to thank the city mayor, the city manager, and the city councilors for letting me speak tonight. I want to start by thanking the city mayor, manager, and our city planner, planning director for your help in finding a solution to growing the Merrimack River Rowing Association. I am a 20-year member of our city's only community rowing club, the MRRRA. We are a tenant at the Bellegarde Boathouse, where we enjoy a good relationship with UML, but we cannot expand and grow our club without finding a larger space. Just a little about us, we are a club of between 75 and 100 members, and we run a community learn-to-row session each summer from June through September, teaching future rowers, from students through retired people. We also host two large regattas each year, and in the fall, our textile river regatta draws, draws in some years as many as 700 boats. This regatta brings thousands of rowers and their families to the river and to this wonderful city. Your continued help to find a riverside venue to relocate to is greatly appreciated. And I want to thank the city manager for his efforts, as we have spoken only a few weeks ago on this topic. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a great opportunity to really advance key element of the open space and recreational plans by increasing the water-based recreation. I'm excited, a while back, two years ago, with the opportunity of using this acre of city-owned land for restaurant establishment and, of course, helping the MRRRA or any other organization for doing so. I know that there has been some discussion, as Mr. McCarthy stated, the Merrimack River Rowing Association, which is stand for MRRRA, reached out to DPD back then because their capacity of leasing space from UMass Lowell Rowing has, like, cannot grow bigger than that. And they also have a rowing places in Methune, and that has been also closed as well. So that, that's why they want to expand, as Dennis, as Mr. McCarthy indicated, the members. They also have a rowing team and, you know, event and all that. So a possibility of looking at where we at on, at the concept of turning this one acre of open space to something good. And so I think I would be, you know, delighted to go, you know, to a dinner at a restaurant by the river, you know, and not many, you know, we need to capitalize, we need to use that river spaces that we have to advantage it. So I just want to know where we at on the concept of this.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. Is this exploring the site, the old wing soccer field, for this? I mean, if you take a look around, too, as far as like, you know, I know that's been kicked around about a restaurant and all these things, but perfect example of something like this might be like even one of the golf courses, the one over in the Highlands. It serves as like a clubhouse, but they have great food there as well. So maybe, I mean, a site like this, maybe it's a primary base for the, for the rowing club. But that's not to say that the rowing club couldn't work out in agreement with a, a local vendor or restaurant to do great food there as well on the banks of the river. So I think you might be able to kill two birds with one stone with this location. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. opposed motion passes. 6.6, Council Noon requests city manager to provide update regarding the status of host community agreements for delivery process license for cannabis, seconded by Council Robinson. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to know where we at, you know, beginning process of wedding and, you know, negotiating with the delivery applicant, you know, has anyone been awarded? And what's the number of license we issued thus far? We didn't hear about this for what, a couple of years now? I know the last discussion was about two years ago, when we talking about putting together a, a, a kind of process and, and, and at the host, for the host community agreement. So update on that, certainly helpful. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. opposed motion passes. 6.7, Council Noon, requests city manager to contact the Massachusetts Environmental Police for guiding jet ski operation enforcement on Merrimack River next to the falls, seconded by Council Yem. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, just about against Council Mercy, probably. And before that, I filed this motion over the years, many, many, many times since summers in the May and June and July, right around the corners, maybe reaching out to, I know that our, our DPD is working on it, but partnered with the, the Massachusetts Environmental Police and making sure that, you know, we enforce that, those who are really reckless in terms of their using and driving the jet ski and/or speedboat for that matters, because children and families use the waters and the swimming and stuff. So just, just, just taking step to making sure that, you know, that we, you know, enforce it.
All those in favor say aye. opposed motion passes. Moving on, section seven, communications for the city manager. 7.1, motion responses, a, 311 system update. Council Getche.
Mr. Mayor, I'll defer this to Council Robinson.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you for the report back. You know, I get it. I know we've been trying to put everything back together since the event that we all experienced. But, you know, one thing I have to say, though, I requested this under the previous administration. It's been over two years. And I just think, you know, I know, MIS does a great job. They had a Herculean task ahead of them by pretty much stripping down and rebuilding everything from the ground up when, when we were forced to do so. Is there anything that this council can do to provide resources to help speed this process? Because I see later on in the agenda, we're looking for approval of funding to bring on Deputy Chief Information Officer position, which, I mean, is fine, but a tool like 311 is going to provide more information than, than anyone in this room is going to be able to process. And so we can dial it in. I mean, that's going to be real-time tangible data that the manager's team, the council, everybody involved is going to be able to utilize, to look for efficiencies, to improve from quarter to quarter, from year to year. So if there's anything this council can do to help speed this process along, please just, just let us know, because I think the will is there, the desire is there. And again, nobody could have seen this event that we had to deal with. It was just something that happens. But, I mean, I hope we can get this done sooner rather than later. And it's, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but this motion has been asked with the previous administration, and here we are, two years, three months later, and it's still not stood up. So again, anything we can do to help, please say the word.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselor, the city, this council has been 100%, 100% supportive. We have noticed, all of us, that private companies, as well as other government entities, have been attacked by this, by the cyber incidents that happen out there. I think the biggest thing is the fact that we're coming, we're out of disaster recovery right now, and the enterprise ERP resource planning is something that we're now moving forward. So we're growing, right? So we are 100% going in the correct direction. And I know that Mr. Fernandez can speak to this at greater length, but I just want to say that this council has supported our MIS folks 100%. There is a lot to come with this. I've been talking to Mr. Fernandez, as well as the CFO. These are some discussions, I believe, that were held with Council Janess and the team about these challenges that not just the City of Lowell is going through, but everyone's going through. So the fact that we, and I'll say it in my terminology, most certainly not Council Janess's terminology or Mr. Fernandez's terminology, but we did strip our system down and rebuild it. And we were very fortunate, quite frankly, that we didn't lose a lot of information in the sense of trying to rebuild things. I mean, trying to rebuild our system has been a Herculean task, as you had stated. So I do think this council has supported Mr. Fernandez and the entire, all the folks that are there. And this 311 system, I do think it will be a gem coming forward. So I thank you for that. But I just, I didn't want to let that go by without saying that thank you to this council for making that happen. There are still other communities that are still having difficulties. And quite frankly, from the state's standpoint and many others, the City of Lowell did it right. So thank you to Mr. Fernandez and his, his team.
Thank you. And, I mean, my- And, I mean, my, my thing is this, we're talking about something that we don't even have. So, so the, the strip down and rebuild of everything that we had, that's one thing. This is a separate component that we've been looking to tie into what we have. If, if we're sitting here saying what we have is good to go now, where is this additional component? Because, I mean, it, it's, before that event happened, the same question remains, where is this additional component? That's why I keep saying, can we do something to streamline this process? Because i- it's been a long time coming, and, and we're looking, again, to hire or create positions to do something or oversee data and information, but yet we're leaving a very valuable tool out currently. And, and I think, if you look around Worcester, Springfield, most major cities, 311 is an implementation tool that they've seen created great efficiencies. And I mean, it's also a way for the public. I mean, instead of this e-gov system where people are sending emails and some stuff gets lost in translation, I mean, it, it's allowing our public to, to say something that they see, because if you remember, we rolled out a whole campaign, see something, say something, and it was from trash and debris to broken benches to you name it. But that's about all they can do is say something, and they don't know where it is in the process. This 311 is going to show and, and, and kind of put accountability in the spotlight. It's, I reported this broken park bench two weeks ago, and I can track it in real time. I think that's a long time coming, so please, I'm going to repeat, anything we can do to provide supports, just say the word. Thank you.
Motion response, B. Wifi at the senior center. Councilor Getche.
No, I just thank you for the response. The seniors are happy, I'm happy, so I've heard it's up and running, so thank you.
Mayor Rook, just a couple of questions on this. So through you to the manager or the MIS director, information officer. When you say that since approximately 2004, no one's really looked at the wifi, whose department did that fall under prior to the cyber attack happening? Was that just something that nobody was in charge of?
So if, if I may, through you, Mr. Manager, through the mayor, to the counselor. The, there have been many things throughout the city that have been established and have grown organically, and the wifi is one of them. Free, the initiative and the idea and the concept of free wifi goes back to about 2004, and when it was established and identified, it started with, oh, let's just make sure we have some wifi services available to the public when they're coming into City Hall. From City Hall, it grew out to JFK Center, from JFK Center to the library, from the library to the senior center, from the senior center to the health department, eventually to about 103 locations throughout the city, incorporating school locations, et cetera. There's always been this element of the level of service, what's available through it. There have been times where we've been notified by a couple of organizations that manage and monitor theft of material copyrighted data, et cetera, that, oh, someone's trying to download copyrighted data, et cetera. And typically, it's people that are visiting a location, that are hopping onto it and trying to watch maybe a pirated movie or something like that. All those things, over time, have made us susceptible to legal challenges and legal issues. So over time, we've established within MIS terms and conditions, we've removed service level agreements, we've established a service that was available for the majority of folks to use it as a convenience. But the key was that it was a convenience, not intended to be something to literally bridge the digital gap, or intended to be something for folks to come in and use to play video games or stream movies, et cetera. MIS wound up managing it, just a de facto, it just occurred. We, we wound up handling it through the years, and certainly when the event occurred, it was one of the items that got knocked out of service, and while certainly delivering that service to folks like the senior center and in a variety of buildings where folks had become accustomed to being able to walk in, and maybe they have poor cellular service, so they're hopping onto the wifi to get to things, access things, et cetera. It was one of the things on our list, but from a priority perspective, we provided the, the tools available for folks to use this by pushing MiFi's out, for example, to the senior center, but from the priority of making that wifi service available to the public, again, it just wasn't the highest priority because there were, there was equipment that had to be sourced, there were licenses that had to be redone, because when we came back to do it, we said, well, we're not going to do it like it was built out organically over the past 20 years. We're going to do it correctly, we're going to leverage current tools, implement best practices, use some of the systems that are available out there to manage and monitor this stuff, no different than if you go to a conference somewhere, a conference center, a hotel, where, you know, and you access their wifi systems, they're using current systems. So we implemented those things, we hired a vendor to, off the state contract to work with us to do so. The COL visitor network is now up and running across the city and, and city buildings. There are places that certainly still have some blind spots, because there's still some equipment that we're trying to buy and roll back out with MIS funding that, and we are moving on to eventually bring in other wifi services for city employees and city devices.
So prior to the cyber attack, how much did it cost for the wifi?
I don't have that number, sir. We leveraged it as a, a component of our internet access, and it was just organically rolled into things as we were told, oh, someone needs service over at this location, can we make sure we have it?
What's it cost now?
Um, I don't have that number, sir. I can get it for you. The, i- it's hard to break out the cost of saying internet access, because we have a large internet pipe, so it's kind of like saying you have a large four-inch water main, and you're trying to get some water out of a faucet in one of the rooms or in one of the floors. It's hard to really identify the cost for that specific amount of water usage. And we've had to implement equipment throughout the city, but when we do so now, we're doing it so that it's multi-use, it's equipment that can be used both for the public as well as for employees, for equipment that we have installed in places, and that way, we're, we're trying to maximize the taxpayers' return on the investment of the equipment.
The, the only reason why I ask about funding is because you highlighted multiple times in your memorandum, but we don't know the cost. You say free wifi has not been subjected to any service level agreements, and then you said the MIS team acquired, deployed funding, funding it. The, the city actually funds these things. So when we talk about funding, it's, your budget comes in here, and we look at your budget, and we say, okay, is there enough in it to fund what you want putting forward? Being proactive, when we look at the wifi, we should have had a capital plan on this going forward so that we knew that there were issues prior to. I get on your priority level, it's not high level, but when you get down to the senior center and we start talking about these things, it's high level to them. Everybody who gets wifi knows it's not free. It's free to the user, but it, somebody's paying that cost. Everybody knows that. And, and when we look at this, this was an important piece to a lot of people, in, whether it's in the schools, whether it's anywhere, so even though on your priority level, it, it isn't high, and, and I thank you for getting these lease agreements, because I think that if you can't manage something, then you should lease it out so that they can look at it and make sure that the, the agreements are going. But every time I read these memos and I see funding, funding, while present as free, these free wifi service were typically funded through MIS, we understand that, but then when I ask you how much it costs, we don't even know what it costs, but we're saying how much is funded there. So it's just frustrating to watch when we're trying to get services going and we're having all these cyber things, and this wasn't the first cyber thing we had. So we should have checked on this prior to, and then we didn't check on this, so I'm just making sure we're in a good place going forward and, and we're being proactive rather than reactive on these things and trying to send out lease agreements, and we're not just throwing things out there and saying it's funded through something without having the actual numbers in front of us, saying, okay, here's the number it costs prior to, and now the lease agreement costs this, because we might have a net savings right now. I don't know that, because all I'm reading is prior to is this, and now we're doing this.
My apologies, Counselor. I'm not sure I'm following your question. There's no leases involved with this?
What, what I'm saying to you, well, it says right here, it says free wifi has not been subjected to any service level agreements, and that's what I'm saying to you, not intended to replace the cellular service as well as provided. And then you went down and, and you're saying that you took it over and we went, you just said you went out to a government procurement to get someone to help out to do this, so that there's an agreement there that someone else came in and helped out. All I'm saying is when we're looking at the funding, I'm just trying to figure out what the funding is and what the cost is, so that we make sure we have enough funding in your budget so that you can take care of this going forward, so that we don't have these issues going forward, that's all. And I'm wondering if it's an increase in this year's budget or not, that's what I'm asking.
My apologies. The, the term service level agreements are, are not reflective of costs.
Correct.
They're, they're technical elements. I apologize for that, for including that in there. In terms of the costs, we, from day one, when we had the issue, we started rolling out MiFi's, which are, we pay approximately $45 a month per MiFi device to deliver internet services, and we rolled those out across the organization in a variety of buildings, including the senior center. And while I know that towards the end of last calendar year, there were a variety of requests for wifi services at the senior center. It was a little confusing in working with the director there, because we had wifi services up and running and available there. So there was some confusion about when folks were saying there wasn't any, but there was. We, we've made sure it was available everywhere while we were getting these systems up and running, but we couldn't get all the systems up and running until we had the equipment, the licenses in place. We did spend some money on a third party to help with installing it, to make sure that it was installed at an organizational level, and I can get you a, a summary of those costs if you'd like, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fernandez. Motion response, C. Poll, Library, Elevated Update. Counselor, any comments?
If the Assistant City Manager would just give the update off of this, that would be...
Mr. Schado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the work's going to start late April. There was a problem with one of the cables, but from what Otis is telling us, that the cable is, is due to arrive at the end of April, and the work should commence at the end of April and when we get the cable. I believe the project, it will take 15 days, two weeks, but we, we don't have the cable for certain, but they're, they're telling us that it is coming. And hopefully, you know, the project will be moving forward and we'll be done with it. And the elevators at City Hall are currently under design.
Thank you. The motion to accept a place on file by Councilor Getche, seconded by Councilor Janess, all the favors say aye, which passes, 7.2. Communication, the resignation of John Bond from the Cemetery Commission. Motion to accept a place on file by Councilor Mercy, seconded by Councilor Leahy, all the favors say aye, opposed, motion passes. Section eight, votes for the city manager, we'll take 8.1, 8.2 together, 8.1 a vote, accept, expend $137,600 Mass Cultural Council FY24 Gaming Mitigation Grant, and a vote to accept, expend $56,480 EMPG grant for fire, with the second reading is not needed. The motion to adopt by Councilor Robinson, seconded by Councilor Noon. Mr. Clerk, roll call. Councilor Getche?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercy?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Mayor Rook?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yum?
Yes.
Councilor Chow?
Yes.
Section nine, we have three ordinances, all three to be referred to a public hearing on April 9th. Is there a motion to take them all together by Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Getche? 9.1, ordinance, amend fee schedule, residential parking signs. 9.2, ordinance, amend parking rates FY24. 9.3, ordinance, create Deputy Chief Information Officer position and salary, MIS. The motion to refer all of them to April 9th. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Motion first by Councilor Scott, seconded by Councilor Robinson. Councilor Scott?
I would just ask that we send ordinance 9.1 back for revision. There's just one item, actually two items really, that should be addressed. The first is that it says residence with no driveway. It was supposed to say residence, it was supposed to say both with and without a driveway, so that's missing on it. The other thing that we did discuss, I guess it's at the will of the body, is that this says age 70 for the discount, but we had mentioned that it is 65 for the downtown parking ordinances. I'm not sure why it would be different, a different age for each type of, you know, discount. So I would just ask that those two items be sent back for revision.
Mr. Manager, if the council votes on those tonight, can we go forward with this, instead of putting them off for another three months? Motion by Councilor Scott to refer 9.1 and 9.2 back to the manager's office. Is there a second? The motion was for 9.1 and 9.2. Motion by Councilor Scott, seconded by Councilor Mercy, it's, uh, sent back, 9.1, 9.2.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a quick comment on this? One other change, we, Parking Director Ryan came to the Downtown Neighborhood Association meeting last night, and I thank him for that. We had a good discussion, and one of the wishes that was coming from the residents was to, because of condo budgets and everything else, was to just make the new garage rates, the monthly garage rates effective on July 1st, rather than doing it right now. Director Ryan said that the plan was to do it now and then not do a rate, a rate increase on July 1st, but the feel in the room was that it would just be better for everybody since people are used to there being a, an increase on July 1st, to just do the increase then. So if we're sending this back, and we're going to change the verbiage anyway, I would ask that we consider making that alteration. Thank you.
Motion by Councilor Janess, seconded by Councilor Dakota, put that in there as well. Hopefully it's done by July 1st, Counselor.
Mayor Rook?
Yes, Councilor Robinson?
I'd like to make a motion to send 9.3 to the Technology Subcommittee for further discussion.
Motion by Councilor Robinson, send 9.3 to a Technology Subcommittee, seconded by Councilor Noon. All the favors say aye. So 9.1, 9.2 have been sent back, Mr. Clerk. 9.3 will vote to send to a public hearing on April 9th. Rourke?
9.3 has been sent to the Technology Subcommittee.
Can you still do both or not?
Why'd you do that?
You can call that the next week, who runs that one? Is that Council Janess, you have that one?
We already have a Technology Subcommittee scheduled for tomorrow, but it's too late to change the agenda, so we could schedule another one.
Do you want to do it before the 9th, or you want to put it off, Joe Call?
Um, I'm, I'm fine.
We'll send, we'll send all three back to the manager's office, wait till the, the public hearing, I'm sorry, I apologize, the Subcommittee on this, as approved by the council. Section 10 reports, Subcommittee's, 10.1, Rules on Election, Councilor Chow is not here this evening, so we'll put that off for another week. 10.2, Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Restoration of Superior Court, March 20, 2024. Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. Meeting was called to order at 6:30. Chair Counselor Robinson was present, Counselor Scott, board member, Counselor Noon present, Counselors Mercy, Leahy, Dakota, Getche, and State Rep Elliott was present. Commissioner Adam Backey and Director of Real Estate, Stephen Andrews from DCAM, the heads of the Back Central Neighborhood Group, the Coaches, Executive Director Thachan and Management Director of Facilities, Dennis Mercy from Lowell Housing, Business Owners, John McDonough and Michael Zame, Assistant City Manager, DPD Director, Yvani Baez Rose, and other members of the community. Commissioner Backey provided a detailed explanation of the current stage of the Superior Courthouse, as well as the process DCAM follows while disposing a surplus property. We were informed it's currently under the, the court's ownership, and the process is moving along on DCAM's end. After hearing from the business community, as well as the neighborhood groups, it's abundantly clear that they would support development along the lines of mixed use, as well as looking to provide some parking relief to the residents of the neighborhood, as well as residential needs. mutually agreed a social service facility in this location would not fit the needs of the district. Councilor Leahy raised the point of looking to encourage development with either of the vacant courthouses, and if so, they be done in a timely manner. Counselor Mercy spoke of ensuring the neighborhood's voices are heard while decisions are being made for any repurposing or redevelopment of these parcels. Counselor Scott brought forward the question of what local options, what local control options exist through the disposal, repurposing, or redevelopment processes. It was explained that existing board approvals would apply, as with most development projects in our city. Counselor Dakota also expressed support to ensure community input, as well as any development that occurs, it does so in a timely manner. There were inquiries if there are any known programs earmarked that would streamline and fund the repurposing of state-owned buildings. Commissioner Backey explained, although no specific earmark program that would streamline Commissioner Backey explained, although no specific earmark program that would streamline funding, the disposal of this property could be streamlined due to existing legislation. It was also explained that there's several funding programs a project like this could potentially qualify for. Through continued conversation, it appeared the city would have more opportunity to encourage the type of development that fit the needs of the neighborhood, if they were able to obtain the property in a partnership with D-CAM, as opposed to allowing the parcel to be auctioned off. We thanked all those in attendance, and stated we'd be looking to call a follow-up meeting in a few weeks, and the motion was made to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Janess? 10.3, Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee this evening, March 26, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a good meeting tonight. Present was myself, Councilor Noon, Councilor Leahy. Also joining us were Councilors Getche, Mercier, Scott, and Yem. Also joined in the room by former State Senator Steve Pangiotakis, CFO Connor Baldwin, City Solicitor Corey Williams, City Manager Tom Golden, Assistant City Manager Yovani Baez Rose, and Economic Development Director Ali Carter. Chancellor Julie Chen from UMass Lowell gave a wonderful presentation to all of us about the formerly known as East Campus Project, which is now being known as the Lowell Innovation Network Corridor, or Lowell Inc., or Link, depending on who you ask, if you hear any of those terms, that's this. The idea behind this project is to create great jobs, drive economic development in partnership with the city and the state, to drive housing, transportation, and opportunities within the city, both for existing residents, new residents, as well as the students of the university. It's anticipated that this project will bring 1,300 construction jobs, 2,000 permanent jobs, approximately 500 market-rate housing units, and overall, this project is expected to generate over, from $4 million to $6 million in new tax revenue payable to the city, utilizing existing university-owned parking lots, for the most part, so these are parcels that are currently not generating any tax revenue at the moment, and will bring us to a situation where we're getting 4 to 6 million dollars per year from these properties. The project is made up of three phases, Phase 1 and 2, each include building a building that will house some UML administration, about 20%, and 80% of industry opportunities. So, that's companies coming to Lowell, to hire Lowell residents, Lowell students, to do technology and other work. And then each one of those buildings will be paired with a building that will be professional housing, it'll be aimed at students who've just graduated, who may fill these jobs. So, it's two pairs, Phase 1 and Phase 2, each a pair for one of these UML and industry buildings and a residential building. Both of, all of these buildings will have ground floor retail, and the whole project is designed to create an urban village kind of setup, to promote walkability, livability, really make it a destination place. Phase 3 will be an expansion of student housing for the university, basically a new dorm, that will probably happen in parallel, once they figure out the exact nuances of the business plan and finances. 20% of this space will be for UML in these two aforementioned buildings, 80% will be for private companies. Phase 1 and 2 will generate approximately 600,000 square feet of university and industry co-location, 500 housing units. The developer who's, who is being hired by the university has a history of doing this same kind of work across the country, they've done this approximately 18 times in partnership with other universities and other cities across the country. One example that was mentioned was working in the city of Philadelphia with the, with Drexel University and the University of Pennsylvania, to transform an economically depressed area into a, of the city into a growing, thriving development, and the developer wants to do the same thing here in Lowell. Why Lowell? Partnerships with companies, from startups to multinational companies, interest, they're interested in the talent available from the students at the university, the students at Middlesex, and the students at our public schools and Greater Lowell Tech. There's a more affordable real estate and rent here than in Boston, Cambridge, and the new grads don't want to commute that hour into the city. So, by building a place where they can live and work, there's a high chance for success for this project. At the same time, Lowell still provides an affordable option that's close to Boston with access to Logan Airport, companies in Boston, and companies along 495 and 128. Additional benefits are providing the residents and the employees with the access to the culture, the entertainment, and quality of life here in the city. So, overall, Link will create new jobs, expand industry partnerships, create career opportunities, and help retain students, and increase new residents and discretionary income in Lowell, and enhance Lowell's image overall. In developing this plan, the university has added a Phase 0 to the plan, because as soon as they started talking to companies, there was a lot of interest in coming to Lowell immediately, and they were, thought this was a great project, and wanted to know as soon as they could come. So, the university is creating a Phase 0, which will consist of moving university functions out of the Wanda Lancet Mills Building, and creating 90,000 square feet of space for these companies to come here and get their foot on the ground here in Lowell and start this process. The timeline on this, Phase 0, which is that Wanda Lancet move, is scheduled for the summer and the fall of 2024, so that's coming very quickly. Phases 1 and 2, expect to see a groundbreaking next year in 2025, with occupancy in 2027. And Phase 3 will be in parallel with this, but the dates are still to be defined. There was, we had some good discussion, all the councilors had some good questions, and it was a really good back and forth with Counselor Chen, I'm sorry, Chancellor Chen. Everyone is really excited about this project, we had some good input from a couple citizens who are here as well, and I would encourage everyone to watch the full meeting, which was available on LTC's YouTube channel, if you're interested in learning more. Thank you to everyone who came and participated in this conversation, and I look forward to seeing this project develop. I don't know if anybody else has anything to add.
It's a very well-run meeting, Councilor, thank you for having me on short notice. With that being said, the motion to accept the reports, reports in progress are placed on file by Councilor Mercier, seconded by Councilor Getche, also in favor, say aye, opposed, motion passes. Section 11, petitions, 11.1, claims to property damages, motion to refer to Law Department for report recognition by Councilor Scott, seconded by Councilor Noon, also in favor, say aye, opposed, motion passes. 11.2, 11.3, 11.4, 11.5, all are motions to refer us to a public hearing on April 9th, 2024, bundled together by Councilor Scott, seconded by Councilor Noon. 11.2, National Grid Request Installation of Upgraded Gas Main, Campbell Drive, Wedge Street, Lower Street, Rodora Street, Atlantic Ave, and Roof Street. 11.3, National Grid Request Installation of Upgraded Gas Maines in Harvard, Stevens, Troy, and Nicolette Streets. 11.4, National Grid Request Installation of Underground Conduit for Upgrade at 128 Fayette Street. 11.5, Request Installation of Underground Electric Conduit for New Service at 78 to 80 Middlesex Street. Motion to refer to April 9th Public Hearing by Councilor Getche, seconded by Councilor Dakota, also in favor, say aye, motion passes. Section 12, City Council Executive Session, 12.1, Executive Session to Consider and Discuss Ongoing Negotiations Relative to the Senior Center, which our public discussion may have detrimental effect on negotiating position of the city. And the motion to enter Executive Session and to adjourn from that session by Councilor Robinson, seconded by Councilor Janess. Roll call, Mr. Clerk. Councilor Getche?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Council, Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Chow, Council Dakota?
Yes.
Section 13, Announcements, Councilor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Women History Month has come to a close, and on behalf of the entire City Council, I would like to thanks all the hard-working women in the whole city of Lowell, and throughout our community. These women make everything happen in the city, as well as at home, so, we want to thanks them for their hard work, to make our city a better place to live, and to make homes really beautiful for the family. In addition, just want to wish Councilor John Leahy, he has to leave, but it's his birthday next few days, so I just want to wish him a happy and healthy birthday.
So, Councilor Leahy asked me to accept the card on his behalf, so, thank you.
With that being said, before we adjourn, I want to thank Vice Mayor Yem for recognizing all the hard-working women in our community during this week. Special thank you obviously to Kelly, Yovani, and Melissa for all their work, they work very hard, making the manager and his team look good on Tuesday nights. Thank you, Yem. Yeah, and I know she's hiding in the back, but Doreen verges in the back, another one that is here all the time, so thank her as well. And this one pains me here, but I want to take a moment, myself, the mayor, and myself, the City Council, I'd like to recognize and present, in honor of Women's Month, an opportunity to recognize the extraordinary contributions that Kimberly Scott Lowell, City Council, has done for the city of Lowell tonight, March 26, 2024.
He wants you.
And last but not least, you know, a lot of people have been recognized this month, great women that have done so much for our city, I just want to take a moment to recognize Councilor Rita Mercier. This is Council Mercier's 15th term as a City Councilor, and when she's done this term, she'll be the second longest-serving Council in the history of the city of Lowell, and I'm sure in the very near future, she'll be the longest-serving Councilor in the history of Lowell. So, on behalf of the mayor's office, and the rest of my colleagues on the City Council, we have a plaque to present to Rita Mercier, in honor of Women's Month, the opportunity to recognize her extraordinary contributions, and for everything you have done to City of Lowell tonight, March 26, 2024. Councilor? Nice. Yeah, ready to go, yeah. What's that? Motion to adjourn by Council Robinson, seconded by Councilor Getche. All right.[1774.82]